The May the 11th, 2017 City Council Meeting is now called to order. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Longview firefighter Tony Marshall. Tony is also the president of Longview Firefighters Association. Please stand.
Mayor, Council, Mr. Willard, I appreciate the opportunity to be up here and pray over you and our fine city and citizens, so let us pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this opportunity to come together tonight and just to serve your people, Father, and I thank you for the people that are standing before me, the men and women that have a heart to serve. And Father, we just humbly ask that you would just bless this landlord, that you would just give them the wisdom and the guidance to do all the things necessary to serve the people of Longview, Father, that you would just give them wisdom, that you would give them guidance, grace, and mercy in all the things that they do, Father, that your favor would be found, Lord, that you would just, to bless this land from the east to the west, Lord, all over Longview, Father, that we would just find your favor, and we just thank you for it, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tony. We now have some business to take care of. We will have the presentation of the oath of office to council member elects for District Three and for District Four. Ms. Ballinger.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Casha Williams.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of council member District Number Three.
Of council member District Number Three.
Of the city of Longview.
Of the city of Longview.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my abilities.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state.
And of the state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Kristin Ishihara.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of council member District Number Four.
Of council member District Number Four.
Of the city of Longview.
Of the city of Longview.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to councilwomen Williams and Ishihara. We appreciate your service, your faithfulness to this group and to the citizens of Longview. I know that your districts are blessed to have you, and we are blessed to have you as council compadres. Thank you so much. We're now to employee recognition. On April 29th, several tornadoes hit Van Zant County, Henderson County, and Raines County, causing widespread damage. Four people died in the storms and several more were injured. The Canton area was one of the hardest hit. Shortly after the storm, many City of Longview employees were involved in the recovery effort. Employees from the Longview Police Department, the Longview Fire Department assisted for response and patrol. Information technology employees provided support for the Longview Gregg County Command Bus. Geographic information system employees helped map the storm's path, helped create map grids for search and rescue and patrol, helped implement a mobile app for damage assessment. Employees from the Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center helped their sister facility in Canton respond to the increase in animal needs. Development Services helped take water and supplies donated by East Texas Builders Association. Several employees also made financial donations to help with the recovery effort. These employees, if you will please come forward if you're here, Longview Fire Department, Kent Morell, Jason Valerie, Travis Pickle, Kirk Stroud, Tommy Daniel, Cullen Wilder, Clay Kitchens, Eric Carling from Longview Police, Ryan Gibson, William Harkins, Ron Duncan, Glenn Dur, Chris Taylor, Eric Cunningham from IT and GIS, Charlena Foster, Colton Pittner, Josh Allen, Dylan Yaden, Wesley Stremel, Justin Cure from Longview Animal Care and Adoption, Chris Kemper, Development Services Vance Wiley. Ladies and gentlemen, these are heroes. These people gave their time and their efforts and their finances and their resources to help those in need, and, you know, we never know where tragedy's going to strike. It could strike anywhere at any time. And it's so nice to see that our community responds in a way that makes us all very proud. Every one of you all have made Longview proud, and you helped your fellow citizens and your neighbors in ways that they will never forget. You touched lives that you'll never know that you touched, and you improved the situation that was out of control for those individuals. From the bottom of our hearts, the City of Longview, we appreciate your help for those around us, because what happens when we do this, heaven forbid if it ever happens in Longview, people respond to us because of the kindness that we show them. And so, you know, this is a big deal. This is a big thing for us to reach out, to go across, and lend a hand. So, from the bottom of my heart, I thank you all for your dedication, your service, your heart for others. Thank you all so much. Thank you all very much. Once again, a round of applause for these heroes. We're at the citizen comment. I have a few speaker cards tonight. Take your time. I have Jim Martin.
I know you all kind of hated to see me come in here. First thing I want to say, I think it was a waste of money for the firm out of Fort Worth to come down here and try to tell you all what to do downtown. I was, stayed 30 minutes at that meeting, and I wanted to bust out laughing, but I thought that wouldn't be very appropriate, so I left. The money you spent there to come down here and tell you about the amphitheater and the swamp village that you might put it in, if we got that kind of money to waste, economic development, don't we need to do away with that department and put that money back in the city where the city can use it instead of waste? Scott Zorn's brought in more businesses than they have, put more people to work, might be restaurant people, it's still jobs. I'm really ashamed of this, and if we can come up with 19 million, if somebody said, "Well, it's going to be private donated," well, who's going to take care of it, the maintenance and the employees and the upkeep and all this? I just, we got fire stations that need to be replaced, something that the men need, Gilmore Road, Grextown, downtown central need to be replaced. They say they can't just barely get the trucks in there because they're so old and low. I can't believe this council will approve a $19 million waste product on an amphitheater that we don't need. If it needs it, how come Tyler hadn't built it? It's going to be a pit hole of money costing the taxpayers. I know taxpayers must have tons of money, because Gregg County keeps going up on our property value every year. We have new subdivisions built, we have new businesses built, they get more taxes in, that's another waste of money is Gregg County appraisal district. Anybody could go up on a computer, mash it, and go up on your property value. I just, I'm ashamed of this council and this city wasting taxpayers' money the way you all wasted. You don't, sorry, I see chug holes. I just, I, I'd like to see a vote of the $19 million. I don't think the people would vote for it. I talk to a lot of people every day, and I haven't found any sub-teenagers who want that amphitheater. Well, I hope it's infested with mosquitoes, where you have the virus, unbelievable, if you put it down there in the river bottoms. And that's all I got to say. I just, I'm ashamed of my council, and I wish I had the time to run, because you all wouldn't like me on the council, I guarantee you. This is, all that's a waste of money, and if you all got that kind of money, it's not coming out of your pocket, so you don't care. The ignorant workers out here are spending their tax dollars, the homeowners, the business people, and you all wasting our money? That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jeremiah Hunter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. Willard. I am here as the chairman of the Longview Tea Party, called We the People, and I agree with the sentiments of the previous speaker, but I'm actually here just to say congratulations to Ms. Ishihara and Ms. Williams on your election to a brand-new term, and we wish you the most sincere success on the council. We do admonish you to please keep in mind, all of your decisions do impact the city as a whole, not just your individual districts. You both have had enough time on the council, you're aware of that, but I just wanted to say that publicly. And on that note, I also wanted to reiterate an invitation to all of you as elected officials to come to our meetings at any time. We have an open invitation for elected officials at every level of every position, and we hope to see you there and dialogue with our members. We have a very engaged group, and please don't feel afraid at any time to set foot in our meetings. We welcome you at all times. But once again, congratulations, Ms. Williams, I'm sure she'll hear it, but please also remember, your solemn responsibility is to the citizens of Longview and to uphold the oath that you just took again, to uphold the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Texas. So once again, thank you and congratulations, and the best of luck.
Thanks, Jeremiah.
Ms. Ava Love Jones.
Mayor Mack, if I could, I know they're here to present cards too, so if we could, if they could just wait just for a minute, we're getting to that item.
How about we just wait until that's appropriate, and we'll call them back in a few minutes, is that okay?
Yes, just a few minutes.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll get you right back up, girls and boys, just a second. That's all the citizen comment cards I have tonight. Would anyone else like to speak and fill out a card later? Excellent. We're now to presentation items. I have a proclamation for Historic Preservation Day. This will be presented to the Longview Historic Preservation Commission and the Gregg County Historical Pressur, Historical Commission and city staff, so please come forward. Okay, Historic Preservation Day, May 12th, 2017, whereas the City of Longview Historic Preservation Commission, along with Gregg County Historical Commission, has requested the mayor by proclamation to recognize May 12th as Historic Preservation Day in the City of Longview, whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering economic development and local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals and organizations in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as people. And Longview has recognized the importance of historic preservation with the establishment of a Historic Preservation Ordinance Commission, designation as a certified local government and adoption of the comprehensive plan. And so now therefore, Andy Mack, the authority vested as mayor of the City of Longview, do proclaim May 12th as Historic Preservation Day in Longview. Thank you all so much for bringing this up and continuing this push, because it's so easy to let history die away, and it's so difficult to keep it in the public eye. And you all do a really, really good job of keeping it there where we can see it and we can, and we recognize it, because even, even growing up here, there are things that I think about when I was a kid that aren't here anymore, and I so wish some of them were. So it's so important that we do that, and I appreciate the effort, the time you all put into this, because this is no easy task. There's nothing more difficult than to keep these historic buildings preserved and to keep these areas where they're presentable, because it's difficult. And I appreciate the time and effort you all put in. You do a great service to our community. Thank you all so very much. And I also know this group is always looking for other volunteers to help you all out, right? Feel free to volunteer with this group if you would like to. Thank you all so much. Next, we have a proclamation regarding National Police Week. Shane McCarter and Officer Dotson, would you all come forward? Gentlemen, good to see you all. National Police Week, May 15th to the 19th, 2017, whereas the Longview Police Department has recognized, requested the mayor by proclamation to recognize May 15th to the 19th, 2017, as National Police Week in the City of Longview. Whereas Congress and the President of the United States have designated the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week, and I further call upon all citizens of Longview to observe Tuesday, May 16th, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those Longview Police Department officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of that duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. Longview officers George Tabler, September 1886, Boyd Gaunt and B.C. Roberts, May 1948, Walter A. Carroll, May 1971, Harvey L. Stevens, January 1972, Marshall Souders Jr., November 1977, and Sergeant Randy L. Davis, January 1984. So now therefore, Andy Mack, the authority vested as mayor of the City of Longview, do proclaim, May 15th to the 19th, as National Police Week in Longview. Well, yes. It goes without saying how important this division of our city is, and every one of you all, from top to bottom, are so dedicated in what you do. You go out there every single day, you put your lives on the line, and we don't ever want to see your names on this proclamation. We don't ever want to see another officer on this proclamation. But for those that have given their life for us, all we can say is thank you, thank you, thank you, because without the sacrifices that you all are willing to give every single day, we would not be the city that we are. So from all of us to all of you all, thank you for everything. Thank you so much. I feel underdressed. You know, citizens, next week, when you see a police officer, just tell them thank you. That's all it takes, and they're not looking for your thanks, but it sure doesn't hurt to tell them that we appreciate what they're doing, so what a job they do. We are now to our scholarship presentation, and I can tell you, this has been such, am I not in the right spot? Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Yes, Chief Bishop, we're going to present our seven Longview citizens came to aid of the victims on South Green Street. I'm so sorry. Thank you, sir.
Mayor Mack, council members, Mr. Willard, thank you for giving me the opportunity tonight to recognize seven citizens from District Two that came to the aid of one of our citizens during a very, very violent criminal act that took place. I'd like to, like to call the seven citizens to come up front, please. Eugene Maps, Elijah Bell, Gary Jones, Crystal Crossland, April Vasquez, Norman Dent, and Hazel Brooks. On April 6th, 2017, at 9:04 a.m., the Longview Police Department was dispatched to 1112 South Green Street. Mr. Gary Jones had called saying that his neighbors had been robbed and had been assaulted. While officers were responding, Jones, along with other members of the community, followed the suspect until police were able to take him into custody. There were two charges of aggravated robbery against the elderly and burglary habitation filed on the suspect. The victims, Mr. and Mrs. Wiley, both sustained serious bodily injury. Mr. Wiley underwent surgery for his injuries and spent several days in the hospital and is still recovering. Mr. and Mrs. Wiley are both here with us tonight. The Longview Police Department, along with the City of Longview, would like to recognize seven members of our community who took an active role to apprehend a criminal in their neighborhood. We encourage and ask our citizens to be observant, and this group of citizens did, just as we have asked. They recognized a person in their community who was unfamiliar. Eugene Maps and Elijah Bell observed the suspect as he went into Mr. and Mrs. Wiley's residence. When they observed the criminal enter the Wiley's home, they then told Gary Jones. Mr. Jones then went to the aid of the Wiley's and began an active role of helping the police catch this criminal. In the process, two sisters, Crystal Crossland and April Vasquez, observed what was occurring and helped establish a perimeter to help the police in locating the suspect. However, this did not conclude the public involvement. Norman Dent, a City of Longview employee, observed the suspect running from the scene and turned on his overhead lights from a city vehicle, changing the suspect's direction of travel. Hazel Brooks, the mail carrier in the neighborhood, also assisted police by giving directions to officers arriving as to where she had seen the suspect running. The actions of each of these citizens had a significant impact on our ability to apprehend the suspect who was fleeing from this act of violence. Since each of them were willing to engage in the community, the police department was able to make the arrest and remove this individual from our streets. The willingness to become involved in our community is key to the success of reducing crime and continuing to make the City of Longview a safe place to live. Mr. Wiley is here with us tonight, and he is asked to be able to say a few words.
We thank you very, very much for the opportunity, and words are difficult to come to adequately express our gratitude to the council for making this kind of a recognition. It's part of what builds community. We've lived on that corner for 38 years, and unfortunately, we've had to call the police department several times. They've always been very prompt, very courteous, very professional, and Chief, you have much to be proud of for the folks that are in blue, and we praise you, we appreciate you, and again, thank you for this opportunity, council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wiley. Right now, I'd like to show my appreciation and support by presenting each one of you with a certificate of appreciation for your willingness to become involved and help not only your neighbor, but help your police department as well.
Thank you. Thank you. I had the opportunity to visit with some of these guys earlier prior to City Council meeting and just to let them know how grateful I am. I just wanted to publicly say thank you, thank you so very, very much. It makes me proud to know that I live in a community where people have compassion for one another. So I feel so much safer with the police and with you guys, so I know anytime I'm in trouble, I know who to call on. So again, thank you so very much.
You know, this is one of those times where we sit back and we just say, wow, what a great community we live in, and how wonderful it is that we have citizens that will step up and step out. I've been on the council a long time and this mayor's job a couple of years, and this is one of the proudest moments I've ever had up here, standing with you all, to know that you all went out of your way to help a neighbor, a friend, or someone you didn't even know, because they needed it. And once again, this room is filled with heroes tonight, ladies and gentlemen. This is just an amazing time to be a citizen of Longview, and because of your hearts, Longview's a better place. And when we pitch in and we do these kind of efforts, it makes it so much easier for the police department to do their job, and it makes it so much more difficult for the criminals to get away with what they're doing. So more of this brings us to a better community, so thank you all so very much, heroes. Thank you.
We would like to call Mr. and Mrs. Wiley up. We have a group of young, our young citizens who heard about your incident, and they have been praying faithfully for you guys, and they wanted to be able to say something, and I think little Miss Ava is going to be speaking tonight. Guys, these babies are from the Boys and Girls Club, so little Miss Ava wants to say something.
Hi, my, hi, my name is Ava Love Jones, and I'm in third grade, and I'm nine, and I'm from the Boys and Girls Club. I have something I want to share for Mr. and Mrs. Wiley. I have a Get Well Soon, Mr. and Mrs. Wiley card. have a "Get Well Soon" Mr. and Mrs. Wiley card. So, for Mrs. Wiley, I said, "Be careful and stay safe. I pray for you to get well soon." And I also drew a picture for you. And for Mr. Wiley, I put, "Be careful and stay safe with Mrs. Wiley, and you will be safe. I love you, and I pray for you and get well soon." And I also drew you a picture, too.
Thank you so much, babies. Y'all are awesome. Thank you.
Wow. Kind of hard to top that. I said we'd go home. That's amazing. Just, just amazing. Top to bottom, young and old. What a great town we live in. Now, we are to our scholarship recipients. And I can tell you honestly, this is as much fun as I've had in a long time reading these essays. It gets better and better every year, and it gets harder and harder to make these decisions because every one of these kids that put an essay in deserves a scholarship. Just the effort they put into it, the hearts that I get to read and I get to see what they're thinking, and knowing where they're coming from and where they're going, it's just, it's hard to describe. But I want to thank everyone that applied, and unfortunately, we can't give everyone a scholarship. We do have four winners, and they're all here tonight. They're going to read their essays for us. And this year, girls rule, boys rule. It is four girls and no boys this year. And that's just the way it works out. When I read these scholarships, I do not look at names. I don't look at anything but what school they went to because I need it to be as unbiased as possible so I don't give anyone an unfair advantage. And so, it just so happens, it's all girls this year, and that's just the way it works out. So, these are all outstanding essays. As you will see, I don't have to say another word. You're going to see what outstanding essays these are. So, I'm going to call you up one at a time. I'll present you with your certificate, and then I'll ask you to read your essay if you don't mind, okay? We'll start with Haley Haddock. This is Francis Haley's certificate. Haley's from Holsville High School.
All righty, before I begin, I would just like to say thank you for this amazing opportunity. When I graduate from college, I'll be able to look back and thank, thank you for helping me because it was, it will be part of my life now in helping me pursue my education and everything. Now, before I start reading this, I hope everybody has their life jacket in case I tear up and flood the place out. Strength and growth come only through continuous effort and struggle. This quote means a lot to me. It shows that you should work hard and go down tough roads in order to grow and be strong. I believe that this is the truth about how life works. However, this quote is not just something that is, that describes life, but it describes a lot about me. I have had a rough, have many, I have had many rough patches throughout my life, from having no mother that wants nothing to do with me to working for everything that I have wanted. My dad has been the strongest influence in my life.
Take your time, and it's okay.
He is the only one that has been by my side through it all. He wants, he wasn't only a father, but a mother as well. As a single parent, my dad showed me that you can do anything if you put your heart and mind to it. He always said, "Give everything your all. Never have due a task. Always follow your dreams." I have came to a point in my life where I want to give back to my dad and make him proud by doing all the things he couldn't do meanwhile he was taking care of me. I would like to do that by getting a higher education for myself. My first step in accomplishing this goal will be to getting a higher education. And I'll pursue my education at Kilgore College and major in health and kinesiology. I choose this major mainly because of my involvement with powerlifting and track throughout my high school career. I have been, have always been in good condition. I'm so interested in the human body and maintaining a body healthy and fit. I want to be able to train other people to stay conditioned or to help with physical therapy. Having a career in the medical field consists of helping many people overcome a rough patch in their life, and that is something I want to be a part of. I believe that sometimes all people need is a little motivation to help them achieve their goals, just like my dad motivated me. I want to be able to help others not just for fun, but the interest and kindness in my heart. This scholarship would help me accomplish one of my goals in life. It will also better my future and to help me follow my dreams of helping others. Thank you all.
See what I mean? Amazing. Simply amazing. Our next recipient is Kara Hutchins, Longview High School.
Okay. First off, I would like to say thank you to the Scholarship Committee and Mayor Andy Mack for selecting me for the scholarship. Okay. Music has power, especially for individuals with Alzheimer's disease and other related dementias. When used appropriately, music can shift moods, manage stress-induced agitation, stimulate positive interactions, and evokes emotions that bring memories. In June, I contacted the Director of Buckner's Place, a local memory and care and assist living center, to request permission to play the piano for the residents. I was granted permission, and this has been a rewarding experience for me. Going to the memory care center has helped me realize how music affects people with Alzheimer's and other related dementias. My selection of hymns, gospels, and contemporary songs resulted in the residents interacting positively to the music. In my first experience, a lady came and sat beside me while I played the piano. She tapped her foot to every beat of the song and sang while I played. When I finished playing, she told me about her husband being a band director and how much she enjoyed going to football games and concerts to watch the performances. She was able to recall and relate special memories. The director lady told me, the director later told me that the lady had a problem with short-term memory to the extent of not being able to recall what she ate for breakfast that morning, but was able to recall and relate special memories of her past. The next week, when I returned to the memory care and assist living center, I encountered another unique situation. The first song I played when I sat down was "Amazing Grace." The staff at the assist living center was having a difficult time keeping the resident calm. She was struggling with staff in an attempt to get out of her wheelchair, but she was unable to walk without resistance. And once I started playing "Amazing Grace", the resident quickly calmed down and began singing along. I played "Amazing Grace" for at least 30 minutes at her request. She said the song reminded her of her singing in church choir when she was a little girl. My experience at Buckner's has taught me how I can help people trigger memories of times past and allow them to express their feelings. The more I go to the memory care center, the more I enjoy being around the residents. Whenever I walk in the door, I feel a warm welcome for the residents and the staff. I'm asked by the staff, "How's your day going? Do you want anything to drink?" Whenever I play, I see the residents' eyes glow brighter than the sun. Most of them recognize me as the girl who plays the piano. Once I gave the lady a card with my name on it, once I gave the lady a card with my name on it, but she cannot remember my name, however she could remember the last five songs I played. Continuing through my experience, I hope I have made a difference in the lives of the people I met. I know they have inspired me to be more grateful. Their encouragement and kindness has helped me realize that I, too, may have gifts and talents to help others.
Thank you, Kara. Next, we have Avery Barnhill of Spring Hill High School.
I would also like to just start by saying thank you for this scholarship and that it will be a huge blessing as I attend Texas A&amp;M next fall. For my essay, the topic was something along the lines of how you can affect your community or how you can make a difference. And as I started writing it or thinking in how I was going to write it, there's a lot of things I would love to do to help the community and just serve in a way. But as I was thinking, it's more for me now, the small things that help and the little things that make a big difference. And so, I kind of wrote on that. A community that is thriving is a community that strives for the natural beauty of its surroundings to be preserved and cared for, and a place where its community members feel safe and confident in the place in which, where they live. As a resident of the Longview community, I feel it's part of my responsibility to do what is in my power to ensure that Longview is always a community that is thriving. It's a continual conscious effort on my part to make an impactful difference in the community in which I live. But this difference is not immediately made with flashy efforts or glamorous projects. Instead, I start with small steps because that is where the foundation on which great change is built. To help preserve the natural beauty of Longview, I work to make certain that people drive the streets of the community, that when people drive the streets of the community, that they enjoy, that they are able to enjoy clean roads and beautiful greenery. I do this by spending multiple Saturdays with my student council, cleaning the roads and picking up trash that may have been left. Plastic gloves and trash bags are not the latest fashion trend, but by spending time doing small and appealing tasks such as this, I begin, I can begin to take small steps in a positive direction that will lead to the betterment of the City of Longview. Safety and confidence in a city is a huge part of what makes a community flourish. These ideas cannot fully be achieved, however, without community members actively working towards building a safer place to live. To do this, each person must encourage one another to make wise decisions, to always be on the lookout for dangerous situations, and be proactive in times of need or trouble. I've actively worked towards achieving these things by getting involved with programs at my school that inform students of the dangers of decisions to drink and drive or text and drive. This is key because the younger generations will one day be the ones to inherit the great task of in continuing a thriving community. In addition to this, I've also led by example in being an upstanding citizen and as proud of their community. By doing this, I can be a tangible example of the small steps it takes to move in the right direction that will lead to a positive difference within the community. There are many who strive with extravagant and loud efforts to evoke change within their community, but they fail to start with the small steps that give the exponential push in the right direction. Without efforts given to the little things, it's hard to expect to make a difference on a much larger scale. Thank you.
Thank you, Avery. And now, we have Mia Faith Nelson, Pine Tree High School.
I also would like to begin by saying just how much it means to me that I was selected for this because, as you'll learn throughout the reading of my essay, this will, this greatly impacts my ability to even attend college, something that for a long time I was worried I would never get to do. So... The homeless population is the focus of my community involvement here in Longview. Not many people in my school know that that is because I have firsthand knowledge of this topic. When we were forcefully removed from my dad last year, I was brought here to live with my mother, who was and is still homeless. This experience has taught me to be nonjudgmental of others and has given my life purpose in that someday, I hope to become an art therapist in order to help other children through traumatic events. We were living in a motel by the interstate. I stayed in this room with my mom and my two younger brothers for the greater part of the last two years. We still do not have a car, so my mother takes the bus every day, grocery shopping for all of us, going across town or to the food pantry, dragging it all back on the bus, waiting and waiting all year, even the 100-degree heat of the summer when she can't find a ride. My only job at the time was to watch my brothers and keep them from running away, playing in the interstate, and also to keep them amused in an 18-by-18-foot room with no internet, no TV, and nothing to do. Finally, when my mom got a job that allowed her to stay home with them more, I was able to get my own job. I've been working at Chuck E. Cheese since October, every single week. My only focus right now is to finally go to college and obtain a degree so that I can have a meaningful career and support myself and my family. I participated in the Empty Bowls Project, which is a project where first through fourth graders gather and they create ceramics to sell for a food pantry fundraiser. I try to do things a lot like this because I love to help children express themselves through art because I feel like it teaches them a lot. I won the Beacon Award this year, and I've been in National Honor Society and the National Art Honor Society for the past year. I've also been in band for six years, but I stopped so that I could get a job. My dream is to give my community a kind of help we often forget about, emotional healing. More specifically, I want to become an art therapist. This is someone who helps others release their repressed emotions through the power of art. I believe that this is the best way to tap into our subconscious and expel the negativity that can sometimes, over time, tarnish and degrade people's souls. This can be helpful to people of any age who have experienced a traumatic event or are handicapped in any way mentally or physically that makes it difficult for them to express themselves. To this end, I am enrolling in Kilgore College to do my basics and then transfer to a four-year university to do my bachelor's in counseling and sociology so that I can go on to get a master's in art therapy. Again, I would like to say just how much it means to me that you guys chose me to help with this because without you, without you, it'd just be a lot more difficult to succeed. So, thank you.
See what I mean? Simply amazing. Last year was our first year to do this, and we have all the recipients up, and we took a picture. And this hangs in the anteroom back here behind this council as a reminder of what you all can do. And we're going to take our picture now, and it'll be hung up there. And one day, I want you to walk back there and see it when you're sitting up here doing what we're doing. Don't come forward. Could you be more proud of four young people and four schools that have... Could you be more proud of four young people and four schools that have put out this type of young person? Because education is good in our city. We have a lot to look forward to when this is what we have coming out and representing our community. So, once again, ladies, thank you all for participating. Thank you for your goals, your dreams, what you've done and what you've overcome. Keep up the good work. Proud of y'all. Public safety update.
Mayor Mack, council members, Mr. Willard, thanks for giving me the opportunity to give you an update since our last meeting. I too, I know, Mayor, you recognize the employees that went up to Canton and assisted with the hurricane or the tornadoes that hit up there. I wanna especially thank our officers that answered the call. When the call came in that they needed officers to help patrol the streets and neighborhoods that were not secure, they went up there and worked from 5:30 at night till 5:30 in the morning, making sure that the areas were secure. So, I wanna thank our officers that responded up there: Ryan Gibson, William Harkins, Ron Duncan, Glenn Dur, Chris Taylor, and Eric Cunningham. Last week, I wanna give a shout-out to the East Texas Christian School. Last week, the National Day of Prayer was the culmination of the Adopt a Leader program. This has been my second year participating in that program. And wanna thank Mrs. Addaway and the kindergarten class for the love and support and the prayers that they have sent my way over the last year. This is just a phenomenal program, and I just wanna thank them for everything that they've done to support me and prayer during this past year. So, I look forward to the program kicking off again next year and participating in it as well. Also, last week, we had our second teen CPA graduation. We had 24 students that graduated from this teen police academy. This has turned into being a good program for the police department. We're already having other agencies contact us, wanting to know what we're doing with this academy and asking for the curriculum to hopefully starting it in their agencies as well. So, we're getting some recognition from some other agencies that are interested in starting this as well. Some of the comments that came in from this graduating class, I liked the hands-on experience that we had, the most fun I ever had, and well-organized, interesting yet fun. I have a better understanding of how police respond to calls and violence and the use of force that they use. So, wanna thank all of those teens that gave up other activities that they could've been involved in to come learn more about their police department. Earlier today, we said goodbye to one of our longest volunteers that we've had in the police department, Don Olson. Don started with the police department in 1993 as a volunteer. He worked in our criminal investigations division and entered pawn tickets into the system with property that was taken into pawn shops where we could then access that information to cross against reports of stolen information to help recover anything that might've been stolen from a burglary or theft and then pawned off at a pawn shop. So, he's done that for 24 years. He worked and volunteered under six different police chiefs and had a total of 8,900-plus volunteer hours for the police department. So, Don's done a wonderful job, and he just felt like it was time to slow down a little bit and then enjoy his retirement. So, we wanna thank Don, and I know it won't be the same without him there. I'd like to thank Longview Gregton Rotary. A few weeks ago, they hosted the annual police and fire barbecue and golf tournament. Wanna thank them, they do this every year, and it's something that both police and fire look forward to. And just wanna give the Rotary Club, thank you for their support and having us, and we look forward to next year's event. And I'm sure when Chief Steelman gets up here, he's gonna tell you the rest of the story. As a reminder, our Free Women's Safety Course is coming up, June 5th through the 10th. We have a registration deadline for June 2nd. Anyone that's interested can call Officer Christie Bryant at (903) 808-3388. And also, Mayor, as you read the proclamation earlier about National Police Week next week, anyone that is interested in attending the Giants of Law Enforcement, our annual awards banquet, that'll be Tuesday, May 16th, at Mog Cobb Activity Center. The doors open at 6:00. Program starts at 6:45. Tickets are $15 each, and they're available at the police department, or they can contact Karen Grisham at (237) 1100. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Chief Steelman. Be nice to him, Chief Steelman.
I wasn't gonna say anything. Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. Willard, thanks for the opportunity to update you on a few things that have gone on in the fire department since we last met. First and foremost, I'd like to get it out there that we will be kicking off the annual Fill the Boot campaign. That will start tomorrow and go for the next three consecutive Fridays. You'll see firefighters out at the intersections of Gilmer Road and Loop 281 and Fourth Street and Loop 281, spending about 10 or so hours out there each day collecting money. And because of the generosity of the community that we live in, it's not uncommon for us to bring in $60,000 to $80,000 that directly supports the children that suffer from muscular dystrophy here in our Longview community. So, as you see these firefighters out holding their boots on these next three Fridays, please stop, slow down, take a time, reach into your pockets. We get a lot of people, ashtray change works really good. So, any amount, there's no amount that's too little. So, please take the opportunity to donate to this. This is an excellent cause. Firefighters have been involved with this for many, many years now. So, we're excited about getting to do this and trying to make a difference in the lives of these children. Actually, we did the formal kickoff for this yesterday. I wanna thank Councilwoman Ishihara for showing up, and she actually put in the first donation to really get our program started this year. So, thanks for taking some time out of your day, and Mr. Willard as well, to show up and help us get that done. We're looking forward to it. I will ask the community's patience. We are out there on the roadways. Traffic may slow down just a little bit. You may have to sit through an extra light. I apologize, but I think this is a very worthwhile effort to cause you about a two- or three-minute delay out of your life. So, if you think you're gonna be going one of those routes, you might leave a little bit early on the next three Fridays. Fire Explorer Post, our local Fire Explorer Post that is associated with learning for life through scouts, participated in the annual fire games. They traveled over to Dallas Fire Department to their training facility. We have a great group of Explorer students. They participated in several events. They actually brought back a second-place and third-place trophy for their efforts. And just a quick shout-out to Alexis, Ben, Grace, Joe, and Hunter for representing our Explorer Post so well. And I also wanna throw out that we're currently, because these students, these Explorers, are getting ready to rotate out of the program, we've got openings. So, this is something, if you're anywhere from age 14 to 21 and you're interested in participating with our Explorer Post, go to our fire department website and you can get more information and details about how to sign up for that. The Longview High School Health Science Technology Program. This is a collaboration that we entered into roughly a little over a year, maybe almost two years ago, between the Longview Fire Department, Kilgore College, and Longview High School. This is in their career technology curriculum that they have at the high school. The ultimate goal is that these students are interested in a career in the medical field, more specifically in emergency services. So, we had the opportunity yesterday to go out and interact with these students as they went through some of the skill stations. I wanna give a quick shout-out to our Medic 3 crew yesterday, which Tony Marshall was a part of, Wes Teague, and Brian Woodrum, along with Chief Dodgen and Lieutenant Dyer from our EMS section. Had a great, you know, got to spend almost two hours with these students, running through some scenario-based little activities and kinda testing their knowledge and letting them get their hands on, you know, these simulated events. And it was a lot of fun, and I just appreciate Ms. Collins for allowing us to come into her classroom and kinda move this program forward. This is very exciting. The thing that excites me most about this is we're giving these local Longview kids exposure to a possible profession in the fire department, and that's what we want. We want our local kids staying local and being a part of our community. As Chief Bishop alluded to, I had the Fire Police Golf Tournament. I meant to bring the trophy, but it's still at the trophy shop, getting LFD put on it for like the 12th or 13th time. A1 trophy's kinda getting tired of me coming out there. But I wanna give a, I'll reiterate what Chief Bishop said, give a quick shout-out to the Longview Gregton Rotary Club, as well as Hayes RV and Raider Funeral Home. They're the primary supporters that make this happen every year. This is a great afternoon of fellowship with our brothers and sisters in the police department. We just have a lot of fun. We look forward to this every year. I look forward to taking the trophy back because I don't have to dust the spot in my office where it sits. It sits right back down in that little square. I'm terrible with dusting. You may or may not realize it, but actually, right now, we've got some severe weather in our area. There was actually a dangerous storm system that has produced a confirmed tornado in the Hawkins area. And right now, you've heard the rain hitting the building out there, and the winds are picking up. And my question is, the sirens could be going off right now in our city, and because of the layout of the room here and the insulating properties of the building, and we're situated right in the middle of four pretty decent sirens, you may or may not hear that. But I promise you, if you sign yourself up for Code Red, your cellphone, your house phone, whatever that is, you're gonna get a phone call that's gonna tell you, "Hey, you need to pay attention, there's some dangerous weather going on in the area." So, I wanna encourage our citizens to take advantage of this free service so that you know what we know as soon as we know it. Right now, Public Safety Communications, I promise you, they're monitoring these conditions. They're in contact with people in the National Weather Service with storm spotters that are out paying attention to the path of this storm. Right now, it's looking like, that's what I've been sitting out here watching, that it's gonna move across the little area of Northern Gregg County out between Longview and East Mountain. So, it looks like we may miss this one, but there's more behind it. So, I'm saying all that to say, if you wanna find out and know what's going on as soon as possible, sign your phone up to receive these Code Red weather alerts. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Chief? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks for being so humble, Chief. I don't blame you, I do it too. Consent agenda. Anything on the consent agenda item that challenges that I take off for separate discussion?
Voted approved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're to zoning. We have a public hearing, application S-17-01. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, and Mr. Willard. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit for a restaurant with a drive-through window in general retail zoning district located on the west side of Eastman Road, north of Alpine Road. A specific use permit is required for a restaurant with a drive-through window in general retail zoning district to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. Eastman Road is a principal arterial, which is appropriate for this type of use. Staff finds the SUP is consistent with the future land use map and surrounding land uses. Planning and zoning commission and staff recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This does require a public hearing, which is now open. Anyone for discussion? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
No decree. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Choi. I actually had a considered resolution authorizing application for Texas Department Transportation, Transportation Alternative Set-Aside Program grant. Mr. McPhee.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Tonight, I'd like to ask you to approve a resolution authorizing an application for Texas alternatives set-aside program grant. As you know, the city's currently in the process of developing plans to bid Guthrie Trail Phase 1, which is from Cargill to Aiken Park, largely due to the support from the Longview Economic Development Corporation's support for our trail development. During the design of this phase, we discovered that there was an opportunity to apply for a grant that would complete the Guthrie Trail all the way to the south portion of Paul Borman. In January, Texas announced this statewide grant for communities with populations of 200,000 or less. It was specifically for pedestrian and bicycle improvements, infrastructure projects for non-driver access to public transportation, and projects that enhance mobility. As this supports the goal of the comprehensive plan, which is, the trails were one of the highest priorities, LeadCo graciously agreed to fund the cost of this application as well as the match for the required grant. So, the grant application will be for about $3 million in grant funds. Should the grant be awarded, LeadCo has passed a resolution last week to fund the required $4.7 million contribution to complete the Guthrie Trail system, providing the city of Longview with over 10 miles in connected trails. Recently, a public meeting was held to solicit public input, and we had a great deal of support from that public meeting. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, Mr. McPhee?
No decree. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Out of the community interest, Mr. Moore.
Nothing, Mayor.
Ms. Snotty. Ms. Williams.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, let me begin by saying it's a pleasure to begin my last term on the Longview City Council. Oh my, how time flies. I wasn't even 40 years old when I started this. To the scholarship recipients, let me say this. I appreciate your transparency from understanding how important it is to have a parent, be it a single parent, understanding how therapeutic music is to people, understanding that the little steps are what impact the bigger steps. And last but not least, art therapy and how it can actually help soothe the soul. I really applaud your transparency, and I look to see you guys live very fruitful and productive lives because your stories, if you can tell it at this age, you will certainly be able to have an even greater impact as you age. I've lived it, not on each level that you spoke about, but when you can talk about and speak your truth, it makes you a better person, and that's what makes our communities great. So, I applaud you for that tonight. Last but not least, Chief touched on this. I have an adopted class out at East Texas Christian School, and two East Texas Christians, several of us do. It's been a phenomenal year, this year, and I just want to publicly thank them for the phenomenal service we had earlier, was it last week? I've slept since then. And I'm a Methodist, and y'all know I make jokes. I felt like I was in the Baptist church. But it was okay, and I felt like the man wanted me to shout. But it was really, it's been a really moving experience. We like to have fun. But again, thank you to this community. I am honored to serve again, and I'm humbled to serve, and I will continue to do everything that I can possibly do for the greater good of our community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Ishihara.
I do actually have two things tonight that I wanted to address. One, just a friendly reminder about what a great app CitySend is. Anytime someone mentions potholes, I wanna bring it up, and it came up for me this week and in our citizen comments. If you do not have CitySend, please download it on your phone and use it for things like potholes or fixing park signs or whatever city thing that you drive by and say, "Man, somebody should take care of that." Take a picture, upload it to CitySend, it will automatically go to the right department, and someone will respond. The times that I have used it personally, the potholes have been filled within 24 to 48 hours. I mean, it is amazing, and you will get to see the city respond and get it to the right department. So, you don't need to wonder who to call. It's available on your smartphone. Please go Google that, as well as do the Code Red. We have great things available through our city. We're doing very amazing things with technology, so please take advantage of those. Second, I did want to address, most of you have probably seen in the paper, we've been dealing with an issue with Eden Care Nursing Home that was hit by the tornado about two years ago and has been an eyesore that I have heard about and heard about and heard about in the last two years. And they recently failed to comply with an order to begin demolishing their building. I wanted to assure you that we are actively pursuing, enforcing that order, and we'll be asking for civil penalties to be assessed for each day that they are not in compliance. So, please be assured that the city is actively working on this. We are not ignoring this issue, but it is of utmost importance to us that we do not have taxpayers shoulder the burden of tearing that building down, which would be approximately half a million dollars. So, we are pursuing as aggressively as we can, but I did want to assure you, we are aware of that issue and working on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wright.
Girls, ladies, what stories you have to tell. You are amazing. Avery, since I'm the city councilman for Spring Hill, great congratulations to you especially. One thing I just wanted to mention, we have kind of a landmark downtown that's kind of anchored the city downtown for, I think, the last 10 years or so, and that's Tyler Street Bistro. And I just wanna send a shout-out to Gerald Rodriguez, and hopefully, he gets better quickly.
Thank you. Mr. Pertle. Mr. Willard. Okay, strut your mutt. Why do y'all do this to me, really? I don't get it. I don't get it. One Mile Wag Walk is Saturday, May 20th, at the Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center. Registration, 8:30, start time, 9:00. Center. Registration, 8:30, start time, 9 o'clock. Sing up, sing up, that's what it says. Sing up, let's sign up for the Longview Library Summer Reading Club. The fund begins June 9th. You can sign up at the library or go to longviewtexas.com.gov/src. Our Veterans Plaza at Teague Park. Please help honor America's veterans. It's so easy to donate. Go to vetplaza.org. And I'm going to spend just a minute here because last week, we had the issue with one of the monuments being vandalized. And it's sad, it's heartbreaking for those veterans that have spent their time and their effort to build such a lasting monument for our community, for a memory for our citizens, and to have someone carelessly and without remorse do something like this, it's heartbreaking. It's tragic. And I don't wish them well at all. I hate to say that, but I don't. But I do encourage you as citizens to help in this endeavor to get this plaza finished. Continue to go to vetplaza.org, donate your $5. We'll get this taken care of. So, thank you all for your kind participation and thank you to the veterans for what they have presented for us out at Teague Park. Upcoming events. There are several upcoming events. Downtown Live, May 12th, featuring the Social Club. Any of y'all recognize the guy in the middle?
Hi.
That's Ty Jackson, the photographer that takes all the pictures everywhere. This is going to be a good one. That's tomorrow night. So, come to Downtown Live. If you haven't been, you need to go. If you've gone, I know you'll go back. It's a great time to interact and exchange with your fellow citizens and enjoy food and beverage. It's a blast. So, thank you for those putting it on and those that take the time to go out and play. American Cancer Society's Longview Cattle Barons Ball is Saturday, May 20th. Get your tickets and go support the American Cancer Society. Longview Ballet Theater is The Little Mermaid, May 13th and 14th, at the Belcher Center. If you haven't seen this and the ballet perform, it is, it's a real treat. We're fortunate to have such a wonderful ballet presented here in our community. So, go out and support the ballet this weekend at the Belcher Center. Longview Theater presents the musical comedy Murders of 1940, Friday, May 19th. For more information on any of these events, check out the calendar and visit longviewtexas.com to learn more. Put your events on our calendar. We'll announce it at our council meetings. Okay, what is next? Survey. Anyone in this room take the survey this week? Raise your hand if you took the survey. Thank you for taking. If those that didn't, shame on y'all. Take the survey in two weeks. If a program were put in place to help the homeless population participate in a work program, would you support it? This is a very broad and general question, but I wanted a broad and general answer because this is part of the things that our homeless task force is focusing on right now. And overwhelmingly, 94% said yes, and as we would expect. If we can find a way to help this situation, then certainly in all means, we should. And so, we're working on that. I'll give you an update here in just a second, but the survey was very general, but it was also very informative to note that we will support something like this if it does come to fruition. Okay, here's a fun one. What's your favorite carb?
I was thinking of the olive above.
Olive above?
Potato.
Okay, let me tell you what the survey said. Bread, 22%. Pasta, 25%. Vegetables, 6%. Really? Potatoes, basically french fries, 25%. Chips, 15%. Cereal, 6%. Okay, I can't help it. I'm a pasta guy. I mean, I could eat it every night. I'd be as big as a house, but french fries were second on my list because I like those too. But you know, it's interesting to see how we, no one really likes vegetables. So sad. Okay, well, thanks for taking the survey this week, gang. It was a good survey. It was a good informational gathering tool for me and we will use that information to proceed forward. So, let's talk about our homeless task force and give you a quick update. I know that we're running kind of long, but we're just about finished here. Real quickly, the task force has been meeting every two weeks. We have had great dialogue. We've had fantastic ideas tossed around. Now, understand, not every idea will be implemented, but these ideas spur on critical and cumulative thinking among these members and that's what it takes. It takes a broad stroke to paint this picture. Coordination and Collaboration Services is one of the things we're trying to look into. And we've come up with ideas about having service fairs for the homeless, having, two or three times a year, having a central location where we provide all of the information that the homeless population could need in one location to make it easier for them to come, gain information, gain knowledge, and get help. So, we're looking into that. Our Police Homeless Outreach Team, Chief Bishop, has been so wonderful in researching this and looking to see if we can form a, what they call a hot team, a homeless outreach team through our police department with a couple officers that are going to be involved in helping take care of our homeless and guiding them and helping them to get the things and the places and the participation that they need. So, these are things that we've really looked at doing and these have a lot of potential for us to come up with. Our outreach message to the general public. We're trying to figure out ways to educate the community on the best ways to help our homeless population. Because remember, our goal in this whole ordeal is to reduce our homeless numbers by giving these homeless individuals a chance out, a way out, a way to change. And so, we're looking at ways to do this and the best ways to help because unfortunately, through the goodness of our hearts, sometimes when we're trying to help, we're actually hurting. And we're trying to narrow those things down by finding ways. We're trying to discourage giving money directly to the homeless people. That does not help our homeless population by giving them money. Giving non-perishable foods in specific manners, we've discussed this and you're going to be impressed at how we're coming up with solutions for this. Give to the nonprofits that provide these complex and complete services that know what to do with this money and how to do it most effectively. Those are things that we're working on. Our work program. We're looking at ways to provide work opportunities for the homeless individuals that want to work. Coordinate programs through nonprofits in conjunction with our city, providing transportation, getting them to and from these job opportunities. Conduct work for the city, businesses, and individuals in town. That's what I want to say. Who wants to participate and what level can we participate by putting our homeless population, remember, that want to work, to work. Now, remember, there's two types of homeless individuals that want to work. Some want to work to provide a way out. Others want to work just to provide money for the day. And either way is okay. And we have to look at that and say, we have to be flexible enough to be able to provide that opportunity if they so desire. So, this is the things, these are things that we're working on. And once again, this task force is so spot on and they're so dedicated. I'm just, I'm so impressed with what we're doing and what they're doing. I'm just a facilitator. We're looking at ordinances and reviewing our ordinances on all the existing ordinances we have on the books and which ones are enforceable and which ones are unconstitutional. And we're going through that with our legal, with Jim Finley and the guys. They're doing such a good job. We're researching what we call solicitation-free zones that have been implemented in other cities that are, that will reduce the panhandling in our community and central business districts that can be implemented to eliminate the panhandling from those areas. So, these are things that we're working on to try to make our appearance look better and make Longview a better place for our businesses and the people that already do business here. This task force is focused and they're really working hard and I appreciate their efforts and I appreciate all the input we're getting from you citizens as well through the emails that you're sending us and the contacts that you're making and the texts and the messages that you're sending me. We hear them all. We read them all. We look at them all. We don't use them all, but we look at them all. So, I thank you for what we're doing. I wanted to keep you updated as I said we would. Once again, this is not a secret. We're not trying to be secretive. We're giving you information that we're dealing with. It's just a sensitive subject. So, with that, thank you all for coming. Thank you once again to our scholarship recipients. You all have made our night. This meeting is adjourned.